We will turn on the speaker. Also, order the pre-meeting of the Planning Commission of West Jordan, Utah for May 16th, 2023. All commissioners are present, save for Commissioner Quinney, who is excused today. We will go through a review of the agenda and then into training. So regarding the agenda minutes, any questions on the minutes from the commission? See Truck Ranch, Larry, did you want to give us just a 10,000-foot view or are we okay just waiting until the?
10,000-foot view is Truck Ranch due to economic changes. They've reduced the size of their building. They're still proceeding forward with the construction, I should say, but they've had to make some modifications. They've changed the building. One portion of it was a two-story building, about a 75,000-square-foot building. They've reviewed, they've reduced it by about 14,000 square feet, I think, maybe 10,000. We got rid of the second level and have reduced the site from about 7.3 acres to 6.7 acres. And so I just wanted to bring it to the planning commission to make them aware of what was going on. But they're still planning on doing the project. They've just had to do a little bit of cost coding.
I think it's unfortunate that we're running. I'm glad that they're still coming. I'm glad that it's still a viable business. It's, it weirded me out reading that there, there isn't a market for vehicles right now. I'm thinking I can barely find one in decent value at this point, but. Taylor, you want to talk to us about the Golden Healer Service Dogs?
Yeah, Golden Healer Service Dogs. It's a 501(c)(3). They train service dogs. They also do some dog-based therapy. They're moving from a home-based location in a draper. They just got too large for, so they're moving into a designated location here within the commercial zone.
Anybody have any questions prior to the meeting on that? We did receive one public comment that email came out earlier. So check your email if you haven't seen that already on the Golden Healer.
We can discuss it.
Yeah, we'll discuss it later, but it was emailed out. Yeah, it was a concern about noise from a neighbor. Okay, well, no further conversation. I guess we turn the time. Is Duncan, your turn?
All right, on to training. I've got some training for you. So once a year, Larry has me talk about the powers and duties of planning commission in terms of your administrative and legislative decision-making, right? And because as I've mentioned even in some recent trainings, then you wear two different hats, right? I mean, we're used to the planning commission handling a lot of land use authority decisions, but they're not required by state law, right? As a planning commission, really, your only minimal duties are general plan, reviewing land use text amendments, zoning map, future land use map, those kinds of things. And, and those are all recommendations to the city council. But in 95% of cities and towns in Utah, the planning commissions probably, to the best of my knowledge, act as land use authorities also, right? And, and really, those are the main tenants of land use law is that you can, you have a lot of discretion between you recommending and the council approving the rules, so to speak, right? This, the land use regulations and zoning map and so forth. You have a lot of ability to create those rules in advance of applications being filed. If you were to give somebody a two-minute course in land use law in Utah, you'd say, but someone is entitled on the day that they file an application to have the city review the application based upon the land use regulations in place at that time. And if they meet all those regulations, they are entitled to approval. And related to that is the thought that we can't, in layman's terms, just make rules up right after the, somebody's filed an application. We might think, oh gee, we should have had that in place. Well, that's something that we could look at, send it to the council to approve and apply to the subsequent applications. But we can only look at the rules in place at the time the application was filed with one main exception, and that's called the pending ordinance doctrine, right? The regulation rule or whatever you want to call it. But if we've already started the process of a city, especially if it's shown up on a planning commission agenda and you guys have started the process of looking at a text amendment and somebody comes in, you know, the next day or two with an application, we can say, well, this isn't adopted yet, but it's going through the process. We can potentially, we can apply that to them. And a lot of times a developer or an applicant will just voluntarily agree to just comply. Sometimes they might want to wait. There's 180-day, 180 days associated with that. So from the time that we start the process of looking at that special land use regulation, we have to be either adopted or not adopted, right? And if either the, the time, if the time expires and we haven't adopted it, then obviously we can't apply it to that regulation. There also is another exception that that's typically just when, like in St. George's situation where they had a river that changed course and allowed them to up some temporary land use regulations and so forth. That, but typically if Mother Nature doesn't do something along those lines, that other exception doesn't apply, right? But that is some, that's another exception to the rule. Barely seen it where a fact power, it could be used, but like in St. George with the rivers changing course, you know, that's definitely a time where it can be done. But so it's for the most part, it's, it's, those are the rules, right? To, to land use law, which then brings it down to your two functions. You've got your one function where you're creating the rules, you're helping give recommendations to the council to make legislative decisions, or you're helping review applications, which is your administrative hat once applications have been filed based on existing land use regulations. Of course, it's always a good idea in my mind to have a chart for anything, right? I love charts, I don't know why, but always have. And so the top of the chart is the land use authority decisions that are powers that you have. The bottom of the chart is where you're recommending to the council, you're acting in your true role as a planning commission rather than a land use authority. And you know, tonight, of course, you've got one site plan and you've got one conditional use permit. That's, you know, in addition to subdivision plots, those are your main three types of applications that come in. Sometimes a given application might be two or even all three of those things at once because we do concurrent applications, right? If somebody has a subdivision plot, site plan, and conditional use all in one application, we typically process that, process them concurrently. Typically, the word that we use for this, looking at the subdivision plots and site plans, conditional use permits, we typically call those serial actions. And serial meaning, we check the boxes, make sure everything on the checklist was done. But if they've met all of our regulations, then it gets approved, right? If you deny an application, you've got to point chapter and verse these administrative, ministerial applications, you've got to point to a point in the code, regulations that's where they don't comply. So what I did in the chart, some of you have seen it before, the last column are the sections in the city code that are applicable. Help, I think that you have as a land use authority to help you process and act on these applications. One is the staff report you get from the staff where they've gone through a lot of this. And you'll notice that they, they always use the criteria from the applicable section, right? So if it's a conditional use permit, they've gone through section 137E8, or if it's a site plan, they've gone through 1374. And they've kind of done a lot of that checklist thing for you, right? Gee, though, you still have a fair amount of ability to take a fresh look at that yourselves. Maybe you think you've got some questions on if, if staff missed something or you're just understanding what staff is recommending. Or as you know, with conditional use permits, maybe you find an additional, slightly different condition that you'd like to impose, look at imposing to mitigate those detrimental impacts or effects. And the ones that you don't, the one that you don't see as often is temporary use permits if they're for more than 30 days up to 150. I think you've had a couple of those come before you. I don't think we've had any of these other kind of official studies very often, but. Any questions on your role as a land use authority? Of course, with your planning commission hat on, the traditional ones you can see on the chart, like I said, the text amendments to the city code, occasionally engineering design standards, zoning map amendments, general plan that you've gone through recently. We went through comprehensively all of the general plan elements. Occasionally, you've seen a master plan come through for culinary water or something like that or stormwater. And then, of course, there's the future land use map, which you looked at in, in totality recently. But then a lot of times you're looking at a certain development where they're looking at, let's go to council to change the future land use map for just their application, their area. So technically, those, in those roles, you're, you've got some discretionary authority, but there's still, you can see in that last column, there's still criteria that you follow, right? So if there's something that, that you want to recommend to the council in favor or against, you want to look at through the lens of those criteria and base your decision on those criteria. Doesn't mean that that necessarily limits your discretion. It's just that under our code, that's the way to base your decision. So findings are especially important when it comes to decisions, right? Legislative recommendations. And our city is a little bit unique compared to some where we do a lot more, maybe development agreement or development plans and development agreements. We have silver zones, as you know, that are not Euclidean, they're more form-based. And so then you've got that role to play too in making that recommendation to the council. Some planning commissions will have a third role, which is being an appeal authority. But you're not an appeal authority under our code. In the past, you have been. Most recently, the last couple of years, it's the board of adjustment that hears appeals from both staff and planning commission. So, and the council is not an appeal authority except for with fee issues, impact fees and other fees. So I really think you've got the two different hats, right? And the main thing is remembering which, which hat you're using. Agendas nowadays always say which hat you're wearing, right? If you're making the final action, then you know it's obviously both on the agenda tonight or administrative decisions where you're the final decision maker. Have any of you ever had any questions on how those hats are different, how they apply? Anything along those lines?
Yeah, this is probably a little bit tangential to what we're talking about.
That's fine.
Curious to know, once the planning commission and the city council have approved a site plan?
A site plan is just you.
Once that's been done, how long does the applicant have before they have to start work on that site?
Probably a question more suited for Larry.
If it's a site plan, two years, if it's a final approval. You know, the reason that is, because a lot of times they would get approvals before finances or contractors are lined up. And so to, to impose harsher timelines may be unreasonable and they'd be asking for amendments, so.
And the zoning administrator can also, if it's explained to staff, there's a six-month extension that Larry can, can issue as well.
Yeah. That's something that always shows up in the conditional or conditions of approval, typically at least anyways, is where I see that.
So correct me if I'm wrong, since you're reviewing a conditional use permit tonight, they've got one year to initiate or start. Yeah, so it's one year after, after getting that conditional use permit from the commission or if it's a temporary or administrative conditional use from, from Larry. But if they do not begin operation within one year, then it's expired.
Start all over again.
Yeah, and all of those are right in our city code. I guess the, the concept there is substantial completion or substantial progress or whatever that, I think that's throughout our code. Even with like a larger multi-phase subdivision, you have to, once you finish one phase, you have to start and make progress on the next phase within so much time, you can't just let it languish forever. So.
I've got a question also.
Yeah.
If an applicant doesn't agree with the, with the planning commission's decision on a, a conditional use permit, do they appeal that to the board of adjustments? Can they even appeal it at all?
There's, there's a change going on in the code now and it hasn't finished being completed. So I hesitate to answer that question because it's kind of in, in a state of unknown.
Do you mean if they don't agree in the media with the conditions?
Or just with the decision of the planning commission in general?
Oh, if it's a decision and they were denied, then yeah, that would appeal to the board of adjustment?
Yeah, the reason I'm hesitating will is, yeah, current code, a true appeal goes to board adjustment. A revocation goes through a different process, as you remember, planning commission, then to the community development director. There's a code change that the council hasn't finished completing, which if they do adopt it, if I remember, I don't think they finished adopting that. The, then that would go to the one-person appeal authority that would hear either true appeals of conditional uses or revocations. If that ordinance gets approved by the council, that would be the change. So everything other than conditional uses, if somebody appeals a subdivision plot, a site plan or anything else that's administrative, that would go to the board of adjustment. That's not being proposed to be changed at all. So. There's, it's on, or you're recommending to the council, right? That goes to the council. If somebody doesn't like what the council does on a text amendment, zoning map, future land use map amendment, development plan, anything like that, then the only appeal is to district court. So there's no internal appeal on legislative issues. Any questions?
All right, thank you. We will go ahead and adjourn until the meeting at 6:00.
Welcome to the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the West Jordan City Planning Commission. All commissioners are present, save for Commissioner Quinney, who is excused. Uh, we've got an exciting agenda today, so it'll be fun to jump into this. But first item on the agenda is the business items, uh, to approve minutes from May second, twenty twenty-three's discussion or motion, Commissioner Hatch.
I move to make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
And Commissioner Thomas?
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Thomas, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number two, truck ranch, this is a business item. Larry, would you provide a bit of background in the whole?
Yeah, so the party commission uh, approved the preliminary uh, site plan and subdivision for a track line, truck ranch last fall, originally the uh, building you can see outlined here was eleven over seventy thousand square feet, it was a two-story building on the north end of it. Due to economic constraints, they redesigned the site. So lot one would be where truck ranches, it's now six point seven acres. It was seven point three acres and that, that road you see between lots three, four, five, two, and one, all the lots has been moved to the north about fifty feet. And what they did is they changed the configuration of, or the acreage of lot two to make it a little bit larger. Uh, hopefully, you know, to attract, you know, to be more attractive to a retail tenant that would be operating the truck grant subdivision, it doesn't change the dedication on uh, fifty-six hundred west or ninety, so none of the dedications are changed. And this is what the building, the building will look almost exactly the same without the second story, you see that very top left picture, it had a second story, they, they changed the architecture a little bit to make it uh, look like somebody just didn't change the second story off of it, but it's still a very attractive building. And so this was really a, mark an informational item for the planning commission they're in for uh, final approval, right now they want to start, well, they have been moving dirt, but they want to start actually developing the site here uh, at the end of the month, and so what I am asking is that the planning commissioners, if they feel so inclined, would uh, just re-approve the preliminary site plan and preliminary subdivision uh, for uh, the truck grant subdivision and truck ranch site plan, it meets all provisions of the zoning and the subdivision code, so there's no concerns or any questions for me?
Any questions for Larry?
Just one out of curiosity. Um, is the footprint of the building the same size or?
Yeah, the outline, it's a, let me go back, it's a little smaller, uh, Commissioner Sheldon, with the sliding of the road fifty feet, it kind of scrunch the building a little bit to the north. The most of the ten thousand square feet or so of it was taken off because of the second story, but it is, it has been reduced probably one day.
Okay, thank you, just curious.
So I've, I mentioned the pre-meeting, I'm thrilled that they're able to still make it economically feasible. It just still seems very odd that, uh, that that's a problem right now, uh, not calling them into question.
I think, I think it's more their model because, um, you know, I, I know exactly your angst when you go out to try to look for a used car, it's hard to find, but these are trucks that are upgraded probably in the eighty to ninety thousand dollar range, so well out of my price range, so. Uh, but I think it's, I affectionately call them boy toys, because that's what they seem to be, is these guys that have a lot of money and go out and fix up a truck, so.
I mean, yeah, good on them for being able to still make it economically feasible, I'm, I'm thrilled that they're still, uh, in on it. Unfortunately have to, to shrink it a bit. Uh, so I think my, my question is just, uh, brief, but appreciate you bringing it back, you're looking for a motion just to, to.
Just to re-approve the preliminary site plan and preliminary subdivision. As I said, it's really unusual, uh, because they are in here for final approval right now, but I really I like, you know, hiding things from the planning commissioner, making these unilateral decisions, I think that you should look at them. If you have some really big concerns, let me know, but I don't see what the concerns would be, but I didn't want you to well, it's supposed to be a two-story building, why is it a one-story, it seems smaller, and so I just want to to be honest as upfront as possible, so.
I think that's a good, good, uh, direction, Commissioner Lynn?
I'm, I'd be fine with approving, uh, the changes, but I do have a question on the other parcels of property there, are you getting any, um, inquiries about the, about two, three, four, and five?
Um, I think lot two, when I've talked to them, has a lot of interest. But the interest gets more and more as the site is developed. Uh, some people are not terribly interested in raw ground right now, but if it's a site ready, then the interest gets much higher, particularly if there was a road to their site, that would help. And I'll be not trying to be facetious or anything, but they, they have had people inquire about lot two, the one closest to fifty-six west, so.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, um, is the landscaping changed at all?
No.
Okay, and then another question, um, when somebody wants to develop on lot two, three, four, and five?
It will come back to the party commission, yes. Yeah, all of that, the only thing you won't see is the subdivision unless they want to amend the subdivision, but you will for sure see the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, further conversation or a motion? Commissioner Shelton?
I make a motion. Please. See. Thank you. Was unable to pull it up on my screen. Based on the information and findings and requirements of, of approval set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan and subdivision for this application.
Commissioner Lynn?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Shelton, a second by Commissioner Lynn, any discussions of the motion? Right, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, that moves us on to the final item of the evening, and that is a public hearing and final action by the planning commission for Golden Heeler Service Dogs at nineteen oh two west, seventy-eight hundred south. This is a conditional use permit for pet boarding and veterinary service in the SC two ZC zone. With Golden Heeler Service Dogs Inc., Mike Carson applicant, uh, and Taylor handling this for the city, so we like to start with, uh, the applicant, Mr. Carson, is that you? Feel free to, is it, it says Carson up here?
Carson, Carlson.
All right, uh, please, uh, so it's the button on the right?
Down below.
Hello, thank you, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Mike Carlson, as stated, I am the owner and founder of Golden Heeler Service Dogs. Uh, we are a nonprofit five oh one C three that has been operating since two thousand and nineteen in Draper. Um, we are now at a point that we have outgrown our facility, we provide service dogs for people with mental health and physical disabilities, we provide every type of service dog excluding seeing guide dogs, so, um, our model, or our purpose of our organization was to help, uh, facilitate an opportunity for people that couldn't get service dogs typically, um, because they didn't fit the mold. Uh, so, meaning that there are a lot of organizations out there, uh, nationwide that provide service dogs for people who are blind, uh, also that, um, are specifically veterans. And we, we decided that when we got into this, we wanted to help those that didn't fit into those specific pigeonholes, so we actually cater to, uh, the audience of anyone with a disability that feels a service dog could help uh, either mitigate or reduce, uh, their disability and help them to live more independent lives, and so um, that is our, was our main purpose of getting into the business in two thousand and nineteen. Since then, we have provided therapy dogs as well, um, and so part of our mission is to uh, explain the difference and, and provide education to the public, the community businesses about what a service dog is in comparison to an emotional support animal and a therapy dog. And so, uh, we really thrive on being able to go out into the community and educate, and we do a lot of um, therapy dog events, as you can see in the photograph here, this was down at, um, Salem High High School. Uh, they had a, a children's, um, group come in that day as well. Uh, we've done that for several years now, um, and it's been an awesome opportunity for us to just have the kids come in and see the dogs, we have it in the gymnasium, the dogs go all over and just hang out with the kids, and it's just an amazing event. Uh, since then, starting that, we have, um, gone all to several different types of organs or companies, whether it's school, hospital, um, residential treatment center, um, you name it, we'll do it. Uh, and so we have been having a lot of requests for our services, and we don't have near enough volunteers and therapy dogs to provide this service. Um, and with fuel and cost of travel and getting around to places, it's become quite hard for our people to do that, so we came up with this amazing idea, a unique idea that's never been done before, and that is to have a therapy dog center where the people can come to us, and they'll be each of the same, um, opportunities that we provided out in to the certain, to the public, but coming to us to utilize that service, and so we're excited. Uh, we've been looking for quite a while for a space. Um, the reason we like the space we're proposing is that it already was utilized for some dog boarding facility, um, space there. Um, and so it has some amenities that are already, um, ready for us to move in and utilize without having to do much um, besides just moving in. And so it was attractive, uh, in that aspect, but very large for what we're looking for. Uh, and we're hoping to grow, to be able to sustain that, um, with some of the other things that we're going to be providing there, so. Uh, one of those, and our main focus again is to help people with mental health and be a, a player in, um, the community to help uh, to reduce, um, suicide tendencies, we're going to be, um, partnering up with a lot of folks like that. Uh, we also are preparing these dogs to become facility dogs, uh, where they can go, we have one of our dogs right now at the Salt Lake um, County nine-one-one dispatch center as a full-time employee. Um, and her job is specifically to provide emotional support and comfort to those as those crisis calls come in. And she's, does an amazing job up there, we also have one up at Wasset Juvenile, um, center that, um, interviews kids and helps them, uh, for kid children that have been abused and in abusive situations. Um, so we, uh, hope to provide more of those around the community, we're also partnering up with a organization that provides facility dogs for alcohol and drug, um, treatment centers. And so their goal is to provide a therapy dog for the centers that they support, and so we will be helping to provide that. And then in the final thing, we, we hope to, uh, make sure that we're bringing groups into our center, um, that will be first responders, veterans, um, working with the schools around here, South Valley actually used to come out to Draper, um, until the principal wouldn't allow them because it's out of their district, and so we even had some teachers that would write treks because they wouldn't allow them to bus them over there to us. Uh, but we're, we're excited now that they can just walk over probably to where we're at. Um, so anyway, I, I've probably gone past my time, and I don't want to steal the rest of what, uh, Taylor has to say, but any questions or anything I can answer for anyone?
Commissioner Lynn?
What are your sources of funding?
Uh, so we do all of our funding through, um, different types of fundraising events that we do, and, um, it's all done through asking. So we have, uh, our website, we have, um, marketing that we do, we do also events where uh, we participate with the Utah Jazz, the Salt Lake Bees, Real Salt Lake, and the University of Utah, um, that we, um, run concessions, which is an awesome opportunity because we have a lot of opportunity for volunteers, and, um, they help us to raise those funds.
Everything comes in through donations and not through fees that you charge?
Uh, currently, we will be charging a fee to come to the center to utilize the center, and then we will be also having therapists there that will work with, um, clients as they come in to generate revenue.
How, how large is your, your business now, I mean, I'm not sure how you measure size in this regard of the number of dogs and training or?
Yeah, so, um, currently we have, uh, about, uh, I think it's ten dogs that are getting trained for service work. Um, so there, we're not large by any means, we, we would like to grow that, and that's why we're looking to move our facility, we just don't have the housing to be able to have that many dogs. Um, we do have, uh, also about fifteen on our therapy dog team. Um, that includes our own dogs that are at our facility, as well as, um, we have volunteer dog, um, therapy dog handlers throughout different parts of the state that are part of what we do, so.
Are there, um, any state regulations or even federal, federal regulations that stipulate to how this type of business operates?
Um, not that I am aware of, so, uh, this is, like I said, it's a unique one of its kind as far as the therapy side of it, and having an actual place where people can come to, um, there's not, no other thing like it in the whole United States that I've been able to find, so.
One more question?
Yeah.
As, as the owner-operator of this business, um, are you required to have, or do you have any credentials or certification or license that, uh, you have to have in order to operate a business like this?
Yeah, so no, the answer to that is there are no certifications, the interesting thing, and as part of what, um, our education process is, is that um, with a service dog, you can actually train your own service dog. Um, there are no, there are no laws that govern, which we wish there would be sometime soon, there's a lot of organizations that are pushing for that. Um, but I think because of the challenges with it being a medical-related device, that um, you know, there's some challenges to try to put some things through that way, so there are no cert, specific certifications that are required for this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, um, I'm wondering if, um, these dogs, some dogs will stay overnight, right?
Correct, so that's why we need the boarding facility.
Um, are there going to be any people there, uh, through the night?
No.
In case of emergencies?
Not currently, uh, the typical boarding facilities in Utah um, and around everywhere usually shut down at around, uh, six or seven P M. And they, their staff goes home around that time, and they're not there until about six in the morning.
Will the dogs be in separate cages at that time?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think it's a great idea, by the way, I really like it, so I'm, I'm just asking these questions to understand. So I get that you don't think it's important to have even one staff there overnight.
Well, I mean, right now they're currently twenty-four seven under supervision with me, so. Uh, i- i- am I a little concerned about that, of course, uh, but unfortunately, I, you know, um, we can't afford, uh, financially afford the staff currently.
Right.
But we will have security cameras, making sure that everybody's in good check, we, we are not, um, leaving the facility until about ten P M.
I see.
And so that will be their last timeout, and they will then go to bed, so just to give you an idea, when we take these dogs out for an hour session, um, they're exhausted, they'll like sleep for a day or two sometimes. So this is something, again, we're going to have to manage because we're expecting groups of ten or fifteen people coming at a time, so each of the dog being in that session for an hour, and we're hoping to do this six or seven times during the day. And so that will exhaust the dogs, and these dogs will do nothing but sleep from ten P M until seven o'clock in the morning. Um, so typically, um, but yeah, though, uh, we're hoping that we can eventually make it so that we can manage them a little bit better in the evening, but like I said, a typical boarding facility with people that have strange dogs that don't know each other, uh, they're kennelled and they stay overnight without any problems. Um, I don't know of any facility in Utah that currently has an overnight staff.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask other questions, but I'll let other people talk, ask questions first.
Commissioner Thomas?
Um, just two quick questions. How many dogs would be outside at a time? So our goal would be to have minimal amount of dogs out at the same time right now. Um, as we grow the business and over time, I don't know the answer to that question, but typically, uh, we would like to just have one out in the yard at a time. Um, so they're pretty good at potty breaks, now puppies are a little bit different, as puppies come along, they'll need more potty breaks. Um, and so they'll usually go out in groups, but the older dogs, they can hold it for a while until it's time for them to go out, so. Um, our goal would be right now, because we're limited on staff, that we would be as many as I can take out at a time. And they're accompanied by a handler at all times, right? They're always handled by, yes, there will always be someone in the yard, if not, anytime there's more than a few dogs, there will be a second handler with that, according to what we need to manage it, so. Right now I can manage somewhere between fifteen to twenty dogs in the yard with no problem, I've done it in my yard with, uh, any neighbors getting upset in my residential area, um, for the last ten years, so. We're pretty good at managing our dogs and making sure no one causes problems. Maybe I should have you come over my house and handle my dogs. I can help. And that is something also that we're going to be having, uh, available as training, and we're hoping it be a therapy dog training center where people can bring their dogs, learn how to do what we do, and hopefully join our, our team, so.
Commissioner Lynn, do you have additional questions?
Yes, um, where do you get your dogs?
Uh, we breed them. That we are the breeder, uh, we have a kennel out of Arizona that we get our Labrador Retrievers, we typically breed the English cream, which are like this one here, um, so you'll see a lot of white dogs mostly in our, in our crew, but we have some labs and we do the mini golden doodles as well, so.
All right, uh, Commissioner Hatch?
I have a very simple question, what is the difference between a service dog and a therapy dog?
Great question, so that's what we all have to educate about, so the, the, the service dogs are provided for specific individuals that have disabilities, and they are required, uh, in order to get one, they have to be like, like, explain that their disability, right? So, um, that can be a mental disability, um, and it can be a physical disability, so either one of those things, the dog has to be able to perform specific tasks for that individual. Um, so for instance, someone that, we provide autism assistance dogs for children. Um, a lot of times they have meltdowns, and the dog will be trained to do what's called deep pressure therapy, where they're actually lay their entire body over the child's chest as they're on the ground wailing and screaming to help calm them. Um, there's also sentry, lots of tasks that they can do, I'm bored with all of those, there's thousands, but, um, so that's a service dog. A therapy dog is meant to go out and provide comfort and support to those in need. For instance, at the school, uh, we usually will go to school events, uh, we've gone up to the University of Utah for finals late, the last couple of weeks, Salt Lake Community College, um, and, uh, other schools just to, during finals to just kind of help de-stress the kids, so. Um, and that's all there for is just to give that comfort and emotional support to anyone, they're with an, typically with a handler. Um, so they go out, and this handler is trained to go out and to assist them in their job, um, out in public, so. They have to be invited to come into the public space, though.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, um, so these retrievers are considered small dogs? Is it, I mean, we got the thing, I think it said small dogs, right?
Uh, I, I think it said for vet, is small animals maybe that you're confused.
Okay.
Yeah, no, our dogs are.
I read somewhere it said small dogs.
They're not as big as a horse.
Right, that's true, all right, dang.
But some of them have been, they're really pretty good size, you know, a hundred pounds or so, it's typical, but ours are the English cream, they are slightly smaller than the American golden, um, but I, I can't say all of them are that.
Okay, another question I had is, um, we have, um, I don't, well, when you take them out to go potty, or you take several dogs out at a time, you, do you take them out to a fenced area?
Yeah, so we've, on the site plan, you'll see that there's a proposed outdoor area for.
Yeah, I couldn't tell where the fence was, though, where is the fence?
So on the north side of the building, as it comes out, there's no, currently no fence, it'll be put in uh, once we get the conditional, so it's just this twenty, uh, thirty by twenty-foot area plus the side yard, which is about eleven by forty feet. So there's a door to the north side of the building, right next to the boarding center there, or the boarding area, so you can walk them right through out to the outdoor area, so on the far north side, that's all a concrete, uh, fence right now. And then we'll be using, uh, combination of a panel and a, and a, um, wire fencing to go around the other, to secure it.
Are you are you not anticipating? Any barking or very little barking?
So there's nothing we can do about that, but excessive barking absolutely will not happen, so there's a difference between a. Right, I mean, so ours are like a. And then we're like, no, yeah, so, but you know, we, again, that's something that is somewhat uncontrollable in certain circumstances, meaning. If they are out in the yard, a fenced area, and there's a bunch of kids that come over to the fenced area and they're all screaming and shouting hello. And the dogs will be like hello, too.
It happens in in my yard. Just takes one dog. And then all, you know, three of our neighbors' dogs are barking. And we typically all bring my dog in, uh and my neighbors pretty much do the same, but some don't, and it can get annoying. Um.
We usually kick barking dogs out of our program. There are some.
Um I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about the letter that we received from, oh, okay, okay.
And we'll do that when we get to planning commission or the, sorry, the public hearing portion.
Okay, so, um. How you you don't anticipate any complaints about barking dogs?
I don't anticipate it, like I said, I've been doing this for ten years, um breeding dogs and. I've never had a complaint from any neighbors.
Okay, and you have close neighbors?
Abs, yeah, very close.
And right now you only have five to ten dogs, is it?
No, I have twenty dogs.
You have twenty dogs?
Currently, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Right, Commissioner Shelton?
Yes, thank you. Maybe it goes without saying, what's, how do you handle the the waste?
Uh so waste is uh just the same as anyone else, right? We destroy it, get rid of it right away, we do, um we clean it up as soon as it comes out, so. Um we pick it up with shovels or with scoops and we put it in a container. Um and then that container is in the trash, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, I guess I'm feeling left out, I haven't asked any questions. This uh Taylor, this will tip you off on a couple of questions I've got coming up, but I'm curious on this end as well. Uh we're talking about future expansion. I appreciate the size that you've got currently walking into this and hopefully this is a blossom. Uh uh I was gonna say business, uh not exactly business, but a uh a program and and opens up well for you. Um in the forty by thirty dog boarding area, how many? Uh animals will you be able to board currently within that space?
Well, according to the uh, I can't remember what the actual. A W A, which was what they provided us, uh that space twelve hundred square feet should be able to house up to somewhere about. Twelve hundred dogs, so it's a hundred dogs per square foot, or sorry, a hundred square feet per dog. Um if I'm not mistaken, could be, yeah, I think that's what it is, but we're not gonna have that many dogs there. Hundred twenty, sorry, I I thought it was mistaken, I my math was off, I was like, it's a hundred square feet, yeah. That'd be one foot.
We're packing those dogs.
That'd be one, that'd be one square foot, yeah, it's a hundred square feet. Or ten square feet, sorry.
Uh that probably resolves the the question I had next, so. You know, in the in the staff report, we're suggesting maybe up to eighty dogs, hoping to expand to it, and maybe there's some future expansions, this really takes off even further, but. I'm looking at where the kitchen rec room is and future dog boarding, I'm pretty sure we can't have dog boarding in a kitchen.
Right, right.
Would disappear. The second question I have is regarding parking, uh so right now we're we're looking at parking really as. What your current staffing levels are, and as you expand and you're looking for, I think it was up to twenty employees. Uh potentially at this particular site, uh in addition to people coming, uh I'm I'm curious about the the parking aspect of it. Probably more of a question for staff as we get into it, but what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I would love to grow the parking lot if we could, to manage as many as we can get in there, but. Um, yeah, I mean, you know, we're either gonna have to make adjustments and either move or or uh. Find a find a situation that accommodates for that, but uh we we don't anticipate we'll be having more than. The amount of people coming at the beginning stages, so.
Alright, I think that's uh it for questions for us, you've endured a grueling, uh we'll we'll bring you up if there's any further questions after the staff report.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Thanks.
Pardon me, do we get to see your um exhibit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um alright, Taylor, go ahead. Alright, thank you, Chair, um what I did just wanna make, when we sent out the notices, we also included a condition use for indoor recreation. Um that was something they were considering before, um. Then we talked about more what indoor recreation meant, they didn't actually want to go forward with that, but the notices are that had already got out. So we're not actually asking for that tonight, but that was on the notice, we just wanted to be upfront that that was on there. Um as uh Mike's kind of gone through what they do, um. So what they are asking for is pet boarding and veterinary services for small animals, our our dogs and cats, not like cows and horses, which would be a large vet. Um so those with two um condition use permits we're asking for. We can see the location here, Outland in Orange, it's on seventy eight hundred south, um I think the front door. Of the building, which is on the east side, is about eight hundred and fifteen feet away from Redwood Road. Uh the location where that fence uh potty area will be is a tree. Uh kind of where that tree is on the very north side of the building on the east side. Um that's adjacent to an animal sanctuary, things with the building to the north of it is. Uh we did, I did speak with a gentleman now this morning, he's someone who actually emailed in. He was uh worried the potty area was going to be at the south end of the building. When we informed that it's going to be on the north and the east, he was more comforted and said, I I don't see that being as much of a concern, but he wanted to make sure that. His comment still came into you, so um I I advised him to, if he didn't want to come, to at least send that through, so that's what he did. Uh the zoning for this location is uh S C two, uh it's kind of what all the property to the. Uh east of this is owned as well, it does back up onto some residential properties, but as we can see, that P O office zone is creeping that way down that street. Um so I think in this area, we'll continue to kind of move more in that direction. Uh as mentioned, here's the uh site plan, which we looked at, I know one of the uh questions that came up was about parking. Uh our code is pretty specific, it requires one parking stall for every two hundred and fifty square feet of boarding area. So for the site, that's twelve hundred square feet, that's about five parking stalls. Uh there's seventy-four parking stalls on this parcel, so even as it grows, we anticipate that they would. Probably be able to grow quite a bit before they're going to exhaust all that, now the veterinary services, depending on how much of. Um that takes over the building, that could use a a large portion of that parking, but. Um with what they're doing right now, it looks like we're comfortable with that. Uh so as mentioned, staff does recommend approval with uh some conditional use um conditions. I I do want to apologize, our software, which we use, takes out a lot of the bowling. So you probably saw a mesh of conditions, so they're just listed here, I just wanna read those. Um and then beyond that, I'm happy to answer some questions, the question I have.
Thank you, Taylor, any questions for staff? Commissioner Wen? I I think that noise is going to be a minimal issue, but if it did become an issue, would that be addressed through court code enforcement?
Yes, it would.
Commissioner Richardson?
Um yes, your recommended conditions, number five, says quiet time. No dogs outside except to potty from ten P M to six six A M. Um, okay. And I I I I just misread that, so that's good.
I guess it should be quiet, the E and the T need to to flip. But to the same point, it bothered me last night when I read it. But uh uh nobody's gonna be present at the facility during that time period either, so I guess it's a moot point. Further questions for staff? Uh the question I have is, uh as it comes through and and. I appreciate uh how the the, I'm gonna say it's modular, right, we're we're stepping in with a a s- a smaller. Organization, smaller business, and looking to grow it over time within the same building, which I think is fantastic way of of doing this, and it's. Not not biting off more than you can chew right from the get go. How is that expansion going to be maintained or or supervised at a staff level? Do we go out and inspect it, or do they just say, no, it's time for us to expand and they start expanding it?
Yeah, you know, so our animal services division, they will do periodic checks uh to make sure that the the location is. Providing safe, clean facilities for the dogs, and so they will be periodically checking as they grow. Um that's gonna be something that they're going to catch and see, um we don't anticipate it being a problem, but. Um if there are any conditions that come up, we can address that through the. They're they're housed in the P D, so whatever we need to do that way.
So you'll get to know our uh uh animal control folks, they're they're wonderful people, just like everybody else works in the staff here. Um I think, oh, Commissioner Wen, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, one more, um do I do I understand correctly that yet the expectation is to have a veterinarian on sites at some point in the future?
That's correct, and I think Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the stuff they're asking for today, they're not ready to do today. But they are condition uses, they don't wanna do the bait and switch or whatever, so we wanted to be very upfront about anything they might do, and so. Um there's any conditions that need to be applied to that, get those on today, but then they can apply with that rather than. Changing down the road and thus not knowing what's going on at this location.
I can address that, can you guys hear me okay?
Uh let's come up here. It's not us, it's the people on Zoom.
Yeah, no worries, so, yeah, again, we are unique to this um process, a boarding facility typically. Uh doesn't have a vet on site, um we won't have a vet on site, we have a veterinarian who's on our board. And she is uh the owner of Traverse Mountain uh Veterinary Care, um who's been our vet for ten years. Um and she uh has agreed to help make sure that the dogs are checked up with every month. And that they're healthy and that everything's going good with them, so we're taking extra caution, not something that we're required to do, but we are going to do. To make sure, because our dogs, we want to make sure are at the most uh physically and mentally uh healthy that they can be, so. That's why we are looking to have that, and like we said, we just, we didn't know when we initially talked with her, if she would want to have an office there and do some things. We did talk about maybe offering some vet clinics, um where people could come and get, excuse me, vaccinations for their dogs. And um help do some fundraisers around that kind of thing, so that is where she would be, but she wouldn't be full-time staffed at our location, so.
Thank you. Uh Taylor, one quick question about the the uh, I'm not gonna remember indoor recreation, yes?
Correct.
Okay, so it was going to be on there, we've talked about what the definition is and it's been removed. Uh I'm wondering if uh is there is there a possibility that it could come up, is this a transparency thing, do we just go ahead and leave it in there because it could happen?
I I don't think so, when we look at that use, it's more situated for like the bowling alley, which is kind of next door. Um their thinking was originally, well, we're gonna have people come in and they may play with the dogs, does that count as indoor recreation? Under our definition, it really doesn't.
Okay, perfect. Uh any further questions for staff? Alright, well, this is a notice as a public hearing, so we will take this opportunity to open this up to the public, who will have. Three minutes to uh provide comments, uh if you're so inclined, feel free to step forward and provide.
Not sure if I'm public or staff, but I'm just thinking about uh Councilmember Richardson's comments about the dogs being there. Unprotected at night, I I can say that this building, being a former education building, has a full fire suppression system in it. And fire alarm system, so that would have to be inspected yearly, so. Uh if a fire does break out in there, you'll have a lot of wet dogs, but hopefully the the fire won't go anywhere, so hopefully that'll leave. Some concern on that part, thank you.
I'll ask Duncan, yeah, so we we did receive an email from the public, would it be best to go ahead and read that? Within this or just noted that it occurred and put it in the notes?
Yeah, you you could you could just note it that it occurred, it's in the minutes, you don't need to read it into the record.
Alright, well, in that case, we did receive an email, so. Um alright, well, seeing no further comments, we'll go ahead. I think I think it's worth noting that the email that we received had to do with with the noise abatement, and I think we've had it clearly addressed that issue. Appreciate that, thank you. I so hearing no further comments, we'll close the public hearing portion of uh this agenda item and bring it back to. The commission for further discussion or emotion, Commissioner Hatch?
I would love to make a motion unless that's, okay.
I got one quick question first, if that's okay. Um and I know this is probably gonna sound like a real strange question, if you have a a dog at home, you ask be licensed. So I know the business will be licensed or the five one C, but does each individual dog also have to have some sort of a? Registration? And that's more for city, what's the city ordinances?
Yeah, come on up, sorry, it's all for the recording, sorry. So typically, uh your dogs in a area need to be licensed if you own the dog. Uh our dogs are not necessarily owned by us, they're in training to be service dogs for someone else, so it. Uh in a, according to the state and laws that I've read, that a service dog does not need to be. Licensed, so they are permitted without licensing, um.
So I just was kind of curious, cause that kind of seemed like a a lot of licenses.
Yeah, yeah, we've we've had that question come up because we, it's like I said, it's a different business. Um if you have a boarding facility, the dogs need to be licensed and have their shots and vaccinations and everything in order to board at that facility. Um and so again, a unique thing that we're going down, so that's something we would definitely be okay with if that's what needed to be take place, but. According to what we've read through the state, it's not necessary that service dogs are licensed.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just. Just to chime in there as well, um condition four in city code requirements, or no, not four. Condition one is the code requirements requires them to uh basically be reviewed and comply with uh all. Pertinent departments of the city of West Jordan, so if our animal control looks at that and that is something that they're going to require, then. Per that condition, they would be required to get that license.
I know the reason why I ask that is the ownership part of it, and I know that's your circumstances kind of the. A gray area, but, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hatch?
Alright, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today. I move the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, pet boarding and veterinary services, small animals only. For golden healer service dogs located at nineteen oh two west, seventy eight hundred south in an S C two zone. With the conditions and city code requirements listed in this staff report.
Commissioner Thomas?
And I'll segment that.
Okay, I think it's worth noting that uh uh maybe I don't wanna put words in your mouth, I think that the conditions that the staff put together were fantastic. It was part of what you read, we reviewed them. Excellent, we've got a motion, Commissioner Hatch, the second by Commissioner Thomas, any discussion of motion? All in favor, uh opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimously, welcome. Uh that is the end of our agenda, uh. Commissioner, Commissioner Wen, motion adjourned, we are adjourned.